Call this meeting's order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Especially Carol Oleski, Scranton School Board Director, wife of Tom Oleski, the city's Deputy Director of Licensing and Permits. Our deepest sympathy is extended to the family as they are in our thoughts and prayers at this most difficult time. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report 2017-2018, year to date September 30, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them and file.
3B Tax Assessors Reports, four hearing dates to be held October 17 and October 18, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them and file.
3C Tax Assessors Results Reports, four hearing dates held September 26 and October 3, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them and file.
3D City of Scranton Pay As You Throw Analysis Prepared by SCS Engineers, Reston, Virginia.
Are there any comments?
Yes. I just want to explain for a second what this analysis is. So, the city requested support from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, DEP Recycling Technical Assistance Program, to explore the possibility, and I want to underline the possibility, of implementing an incentive-based or pay-as-you throw program to encourage increased recycling. So, this project, this analysis, if you look at it, provides the city information on the different types of incentive-based programs that may be implemented by the city. And it provides some guidance as to what program may make the most sense should the city decide to implement a pay-as-you throw program. I did speak to the business administrator regarding this analysis, and he explained to me that this was one thing that they would be considering, but this isn't a definite program that the city is going to implement. They're just going to use this as a guide should, in the future, they want to move in that direction. So, just want to make sure that everybody understands this isn't something that is going to happen even, I think, in the near future. If you look at the analysis, I think this company did a good job in explaining the benefits of it and the challenges of it. There are a number of municipalities throughout Pennsylvania and throughout the country that implement a pay-as-you throw type system. But, again, if you take a look at this, there are a lot of benefits, but I can foresee a lot of challenges with it as well. So, it's something that will definitely be discussed in the next couple of weeks and months. Thank you.
I also have quite a bit to say on that item, but I will wait till motions. I think anyone that watches the meetings know this is something I've been talking about as long as I've been on council. Received and filed.
3E Breakdown of Eligible Salaries for the Liquid Fuels Account for the Months of July, August, and September 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them and filed.
3F Minutes of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority Board Meeting Held September 10, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them and filed. Do any council members have announcements? I have a couple. We have a new initiative in the city that I'm happy to announce regarding recycling leaf bags. The recycling leaf bags are available beginning today at all fire stations throughout the city. City residents can pick them up for no charge, however, you do need to show your ID to show that you are actually a city resident. A separate announcement will be made in the near future when the date has been set for the citywide leaf pickup by the DPW. So, that just came today. Secondly, an executive session was held prior to tonight's meeting to discuss a matter of litigation.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodewannas.
Joan Hodewannas, City Resident and Taxpayer. So, where do we stand on the audit?
We were told today that we will have it hopefully this week.
Complete it?
Yes.
Done and wrapped up and ready to release to the public?
I hope so.
I do, too. It's four and a half months late, 137 days, but hopefully they've been able to use the information as they prepare the budget. Speaking of the budget, do you think we get the draft about mid-November?
Well, it has to be provided by mid-November.
Okay. And hopefully it'll be promptly put on the website. Also, please make sure they put the audit on the website so that people can look at it. The only other thing I really want to talk about tonight is this article from The Times from October 13th. "City Fire Chief Denies Role in Son's Hiring." I have a lot of mixed feelings about this article. When I came back to Scranton 20 years ago, when I retired from the Army, I was required by law to go to a separation briefing in Wiltsbury that the VA ran. And went down there, it was in the Jewel Court Building, as I recall, walked into the office, walked into the gentleman's office, and curiously, he didn't say, "Good morning, my name is so-and-so," or "Please have a seat," or "Would you like a cup of coffee." The first thing out of his mouth was, "Well, I hope you're not trying to get a teaching job in Scranton, because if you're not connected, there's no way they're going to hire you." Now, when I first went into the Army in 1975, it was at a time when you had to know someone to get a teaching job. It was an open secret. But, you know, and when I retired, the first thing on my agenda wasn't trying to get a teaching job, it was family-related matters. I didn't know what I wanted to do with myself. But, the fact that that was the first thing out of this man's mouth absolutely shocked me. It was like 1975 all over again. And, you know, so now we have this article. And I say I have mixed feelings because nepotism bothers me a great deal. It should be a federal crime, as far as I'm concerned. But, be that as it may, if there's no proof of nepotism, it's not an allegation that should be thrown around lightly. As I read this article, and seeing that Jacob DeSorno took the civil service exam, he was one of five people to score above 90. Granted, he had a misdemeanor assault conviction for an event that occurred in 2017. But, other than that, you know, apparently, he, his application was handled relatively anonymously by the civil service. So, I can't see how he would have gotten any preference by the Civil Service Commission. And he probably knew that if he applied to become a firefighter, his application, his hiring would come under public scrutiny. So, I doubt very much that he would try to hide anything. According to this article, because it's not a felony conviction, he can't apply to become a firefighter. Now, what I got to tell you is, anybody who applies to become a firefighter is courageous, strong, you know, somebody to be respected, because that is not only a dangerous job, it's an extremely difficult one, physically, mentally, and emotionally demanding. And the fact that his father is also a firefighter and the chief of the department, well, I say, a lot of young men want to follow in their father's footsteps, and I don't see anything wrong with that as long as he's not given preference because of that family relationship. And I see no evidence in this article that he was given preference. So, my comment is, let's wait to see, you know, let him get hired. If anybody's got proof that he did anything wrong in his application process, or there's any connection of nepotism, that's one thing. If there isn't, let the guy alone. Let him prove himself as a firefighter. I'm very thankful for those people every time I see a fire truck going down the road. I've never been in a fire, and I don't care to be in one, but I feel comfortable that if I were in that situation, I could trust the Scranton Fire Department. It's a very difficult job. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Frannis?
Fay Frannis, Scranton. Yes, I'd like to talk about what you spoke of, Mr. Gahn, about the study for the garbage fee. Here's what I think. First of all, Mr. Rogan, when you used to bring this up about per-bag fee, how it would be great for seniors, maybe they only have one bag a week, but you forgot to mention that there would be a fee on top of the price per bag. And these numbers in this study were hypothetical, but one of them was $250 plus a dollar a bag. You could spend much more than $300 with the pain now with the per-bag, because nobody knows how many bags they're going to need. But, people have to understand that there's going to be a fee on top of the price per bag. And then, there's going to be people dumping their garbage every place else, and there's going to be skunks and everything else getting your garbage all over. I don't think any of these options in this garbage fee should be considered at all. And if you're going to be sending out flyers to explain to people how this will work, how about the postage for that when it shouldn't be going in the first place? This should be not even considered. I can't believe the state paid that much money for a garbage study. They didn't even put privatization in there. That wasn't even one of the options, to put it out the bid for private contractors. Why wasn't that in the study? If you're going to have a study, do it right. Here's what the study should have said. Write down how much money it costs to run the department for garbage, then write down how much money comes in, and whatever comes in pays that, and whatever is left, there shouldn't be anything left like there was for the last four years. In other words, what you were doing before is we were paying $300. And I've asked for like four years now for Mr. Evans, how much money did they take in from the people, and how much money did they spend out? And he would never answer me. Now, he's using a lawsuit as a reason for not giving me any answers. So, to this day, I think we paid maybe $2 million more than what we had to, the city, and they just took that money and put it in the general fund and paid their other bills with it, which is illegal. So, I think when this lawsuit comes through, people are going to get the money back that they overpaid. But then, you're going to have Mayor Courtright raise your taxes to pay for that money. And I think that's illegal, Mr. Gahn. I wish you would check into that. If by chance the mayor raises taxes, part of the tax money goes to use that money to pay back the people that paid too much. That's like, I'm giving you money, you're giving it back to me, and then I'm giving it back to you. That's crazy. And here's the thing about trying to encourage people to recycle, that's why you're going per-bag. Well, when did we ever, when you took the recyclables up to wherever you dumped them, and you got money for the recyclables, how come that money was never added to the garbage fee to lower it for the people? That money was never added to our money that we added. What did that, where did you put that money? Where did that money go? And are you continuing to keep that money and paying other bills with it? Does anybody know up there where that money goes from the recyclable that we get, the city gets for them?
I believe it goes into the general fund.
The general fund? But, that money should be going into the lower the garbage fee. And if they're going to continue to do that next year, something definitely should be checked into. Mr. Evans, you're the finance chair. You should definitely make sure that that recyclable money goes towards the garbage fee to lower it. And if you're going to do anything about the garbage fee, you should just lower it to whatever we pay and whatever it costs, if it's $100, $120, if it's $300, whatever it costs to run that operation per each household, divide it. And whatever comes to it, comes to it. Don't be using our money to pay your other bills that you've been doing for the last so many years. So, I know this year you're going to keep it at 300 because the lawsuit isn't, but I just hope that you never, ever go per-bag, because you senior citizens are, that you made them believe, Mr. Rogan, you led them to believe that, oh, that'd be good for them. They only have one bag. That won't cost them anything. But, there's going to be a fee on top of it.
Under this proposal is a hybrid system. I never advocated for a hybrid system.
Well, that's what the study is saying that they might consider.
This study does consider a hybrid system, which...
Yeah, I know, which means a fee plus the cost of the bags. And that could be well over $300. And you won't know from one week to the next how much garbage you're going to eat. And then, if there's other things that you want to put out that doesn't go in a bag, where do you put that? Is that an extra charge for them to come pick up that they didn't normally pick up now?
In other towns, what they do is you put a bag, for instance, you want to throw out a chair or something, you attach a sticker that would go on a bag to the chair.
Yeah, so it's more, it's more money. Some weeks, people have many, many things to put out in their garbage. So, how about a family with a lot of kids and stuff?
Well, they should pay more than the single person that lives alone.
But, that's not the point. The point is, there should not be a per...
That is the point.
No, it isn't, because that way, the only way to stop that is per-bag. And per-bag is going to nail the senior citizens. Just go back and only charge us what it costs to run the operation, not a penny more. But, take the recyclable fee money and put it in with the other money. That'll lower our costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Darrell Palmer?
Good evening, everyone. It's the first time I was ever here, so I don't know what the protocol is. My name is Darrell Palmer. I do live in Scranton, and I do pay taxes to the city of Scranton. My name is Darrell Palmer, Scranton taxpayer, and live on 2636 Pittston Avenue. I'm here today to discuss the issues of major flooding that is causing damages to my property and everyone's property around me. I have lived on the 2600 block of Pittston Avenue for over 14 years, and this issue of flooding has never been fixed and continues to become worse, to say the least. The water is coming down Kane Street like a river and running onto Pittston Avenue with nowhere to go. The current drainage system that is in place cannot keep up with the magnitude of water that they are receiving. Winfield Avenue currently has no drains in place to relieve some of the water problems. My neighbors' basements are flooding, and properties are being damaged. This is a total disgrace that we are paying taxes and nothing is being done about this issue. There is a manufacturer company on Winfield Avenue that put in a major parking lot in that has over 50 trucks parked on it and did not put any drainage system in underneath the ground, which is also a problem that is making the flooding worse. There is another business on Winfield Avenue that has basically turned into a dump and should be looked at by the city of Scranton and the owners held accountable to be cleaned up. This property is also an issue to the flooding that is occurring as the water is coming down from the above property where all the trucks are parked. The water then contending down through this property spilling into the alleyway and down into Pittston Avenue. These property owners need to be held responsible for these issues they are causing for the property owners and residents around them. I also believe there is diesel fuel and oil getting into the water and soil. I have contacted the Environmental Protection Agency so they could come out and do some water and soil sampling. I have spoken with PennDOT, and they have told me that the drains located under Pittston Avenue is the responsibility of the city of Scranton to maintain, fix, and be replaced if needed. It seems to me no one wants to take the responsibility for what is occurring, just a lot of finger pointing between the city of Scranton, PennDOT, and American Water. I'm asking that something be done with this terrible issue that the residents and business owners are facing every time it rains. I was told two weeks ago on someone would be out to clean the drains, but it still has not been done. This will not resolve the issue of the major problem we are all dealing with. It's ridiculous, to say the least. I ask this meeting, I ask that a meeting be set up with all the major players in place to discuss the issues, which are spokesmen from the city of Scranton, PennDOT, American Water, and whoever else we need to get involved to come up with a solution to fix the ongoing problem. Thank you for your time in this matter, and I look forward to seeing issues looked at and fixed. As you see by them pictures, that white house, that's my house. When it floods, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Perry for coming out and taking a look at what's going on. And the mayor was out there. But unfortunately, the mayor comes out when there's no rain, the streets are cleaned up, and it's over with. They're not seeing the impact that we're dealing with. As you see in them pictures, that's my house. I take pride in where I live and how I keep my house, and that's not fair. That's not fair to anybody that lives near me. So, I'm asking, please, do something. That poor old man in that picture is my next-door neighbor. He's 86 years old. You think he should live like that? That when he opens his front door, it looks like a lake? The man tries to take care of his stuff, and this is what we get. Now, I know no one probably ever came over here and talked about this, so I'm not pointing fingers right now. All I am asking is, please, evaluate the situation and hold them business accountable that are up there. They're running, they're running around, it's unbelievable. Trucks all over the place, diesel fuel pouring down the roads, oil in the water. I mean, I had a call, the Environmental Protection, they said to come out and take a look at some of this stuff.
Have they responded to you at all?
They have, and they will be, they will be getting contacting me this week when they can send someone out there.
Now, have you talked to Pennsylvania American Water? Did they tell you that it was definitely a stormwater issue, or...
I talked to, well, American Water was out there, the sewer authority was out there, but I talked to a gentleman from PennDOT, and he was a very nice gentleman. And he, I said, "Well, the mayor was out here." And he said, "What did the mayor tell you?" Actually, I said, "The mayor told him, well, it might not be their responsibility of these drain systems that were the waters flowing." Now, PennDOT did say this, they said, "Well, we are not, we are not responsible for the drainage on Pittston Avenue. We're responsible for the surface, the snow cleaning, and the maintaining of the road."
Right.
Yeah, Wayne, here's some of the issue. When I was out there with Mr. Palmer a couple weeks ago after the last lake incurred, and Mr. Palmer's been there 15 years, and I know it's been going on a lot, lot longer than that. It's just now with, with the climate change and the extra rain we're getting, and all the roads that are paving and the businesses up there, the problem just, it's happening more often and more severely. And how it was explained to me by American Water and our DPW is DPW's, obviously, you know, all the city streets, they're responsible for. Those were all scoped out and look fine. The actual, from Kane Street all the way down to Collery, it's a much bigger drainage pipe, probably about 20 inches. The state road, when they, when PennDOT installed the drainage system on Bernie Avenue, they used 12-inch drainage. So, once the water gets down to that little flat, it will continue down, but it doesn't go where it needs to go. On top of that, there's buildup of sediment. So, American Water was brought in, and they are, I talked to Jeremy, who's the engineer of American Water, and he's going to be getting out there, he was supposed to be out there already, and he hasn't been, which was a struggle for, for us as well, to get those lines at least flushed out to help with the problem. I'm also in the works, as you know, Mr. Palmer, getting PennDOT, Mr. Potius, and DPW in the same room at the time to see if there's a way to either divert the water on top of Kane Street, if there's, if there's another way to go, maybe before, when it gets to Winfield Avenue, just to alleviate some of that pressure coming down, or get, ask PennDOT, which I think is a long shot, to increase the size of their drainage pipe, but I know they're not going to rip up the road and do that. But, there's got to be another way to divert the water before it actually hits Pittston Avenue.
And it also seems that the problem above where the plant is you're talking about, where they paved the parking lot, because according to the picture here, the water is just running right off that.
They didn't even pave, it's just dirt.
Just dirt?
And you'll see in that one picture on Winfield Avenue where it's starting to erode.
You're right.
That water's going across Winfield, because Winfield Avenue has no drains on it in that area. So, the water has nowhere to go but down Kane Street into Pittston Avenue.
There's nothing to capture that at all, and I think that...
Nothing at all.
No, and that starts all the way up at Penwood, like right, right by the connoisseur where the post office is. And, you know, again, we paved Kane Street, and once Kane Street got paved, that amplified the problem as well.
I know my time is up, but I just ask, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, Mr. Palmer. In the caucus tonight, this, not this specific issue, but I grew up in Manuka, so I know exactly, you know, what goes on here. But, I did discuss with my colleagues, and I will make a motion in fifth order to call for a public meeting with the mayor, with any appropriate official in his cabinet, and anybody else to discuss not only this issue, but all of the flooding issues around the city. Because my phone, I'm not kidding you, my phone rings off the hook. I just got a call today from a gentleman in Kaiser Valley. And the answer we're getting from members of the administration is that there's not enough money, it will cost too much money, but, I mean, you live there, you know, you pay your taxes like you just said, and that type of answer is unacceptable. So, you know, my response to that is, if it's a man-made problem, man can fix it, right? So, there has to be something that we can do, even if it's in the interim, to try to stem this problem, because, you know, these aren't 100-year storms anymore. We're going to keep getting rain like this. It might be worse next summer. So, in fifth order tonight, I am going to call for a public meeting with the mayor, with the appropriate members of his administration, so that somebody is held responsible for this, and that they answer questions in a public forum when there are people there to hear their responses. And, you know, I'll explain further, because I do have other questions on some of the, of the city's response and the protocols that are in place, but like in Kaiser Valley, and similar to where you live, there should be, and maybe there is, but I don't, I've asked this question, I still haven't gotten a response. What is the protocol? This happens every time it rains. So, it's unacceptable that you even have to come down here to request that. But, we are going to call a meeting. And that, that's one of the things we're discovering now is what's happening is that when it happens to something like yourself, you don't even know where to start. So, now, you're getting educated to the process, but that's not how it should be. There should be one phone call to one person, and they should run with it. And that's how it should work.
And, you know, I do call, when it floods, I call the police, I call the firemen. I smell diesel fuel because of the gas station across the street from my house. And, you know, they come out, it takes them some time to block that road, and the problem is, in the interim, before the road gets blocked, there's trucks coming through, there's cars getting stuck in the middle, and the water is being pushed up into the property so bad. I mean, my front lawn, I try to keep it manicured, and I'm sure if you live in Manuka, you know my property and how I try to keep it. Right now, I'm starting to lose part of the erosion of my grass in all the dirt that was put up in there. But, I'll leave it at that. I appreciate your time, I really do. And hopefully, we can do something with this, because, you know, like I said, that 86-year-old man that sits on that porch, he doesn't deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Sean Walsh, property owner and business owner on the same block as Mr. Palmer just spoke about. Not going to waste a lot of your time. He pretty much hit all the points that needed to be hit, but I've been in business there 17 years. I have the car dealership on the corner. Just dealing with a lot of mess. I mean, it is just absolutely a mess. As Mr. Perry knows, he's in the neighborhood. I expanded my business, and the city made me hold my water in my car dealership. It cost me $200,000 to hold my water. As a small business owner, it's hard, and this is how you guys hold your water. I mean, it's, you guys fill my, my underground water detention system. You guys fill it with the water from, it doesn't even hold my water, because you guys fill it before I can even hold my own. It's just extremely frustrating, guys. I mean, like 17 years of being there and dealing with this, the day after it floods like that. I got to get all my employees out all day to clean up the mess, the streets. Nobody comes to help us clean up those streets, and we beg for street sweepers. They tell us it's a state road, they can't do it. It's, it's very, very frustrating. Mr. Perry, I think you know, we showed you the one pipe that is, that busted through Kane Street now. I met with DPW again there a few days ago.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, for you guys that are familiar, had a, had an issue that we had, similar issue in Kaiser Valley, where the drainage just comes down so hard that even though it's not a pressurized pipe, there's nowhere for the water to go once it hits the bottom of the hill, because it's already flooded. So, it just backs up, and it pops the older pipes, and then, next thing you know, there's, he has an unalanced babbling brook where it shouldn't be because of a damaged pipe because of improper drainage system.
Well, the gentleman happened to say that he, they think that's normal, and it should be like that. That's the response I got the last storm, which is not normal. I've been there 17 years, it was never like that before. I recently purchased that property behind me, and it's just, all the money I spent, it's washing away all my pavement, it's washing away all the stone that I put in, it's just, it's just an absolute mess, guys.
No, we used to have that problem there when it was Hurricane Gloria or a major, major storm. But, now, it's a two-hour rain event, and it floods. A two-hour, and it rained all summer. So, I mean, this is one, one of many problems that were around the city, but this is, this is as severe as I've ever seen it, and it, something has to be done about it.
And I do appreciate your help, Mr. Perry, with the situation. And if you guys ever want to come out and take a peek at what we got going on there, it's, it's pretty bad. It's pretty bad. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Council, Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Been a while since I've been here. Been a while since I've been here. First of all, my thoughts and prayers go out to the Alessi family. Known Carol for a number of years. One of the nicest people I ever met. Different functions I'd meet her at, she was like a ray of sunshine with her smile. She's gonna be deeply missed, I know I'm gonna miss her. She was a wonderful person. And, my God bless her family, my thoughts and prayers. Okay. I learned something recently that really shocked me. As most people, I live in Tripp Park. Community Center was built, I think back in the nineties, with funds that were made for a picnic we used to have every year. I think Council Morogan, if you are familiar with that, used to close off Dorothy Street and have a huge picnic. And the Tripp Park Neighborhood Association built that community center with the funds that we made. I just recently found out that the city owns that building. I was shocked to hear that. I mean, the Neighborhood Association built that building, and the city owns it? And I was told the city does nothing to that building. The Neighborhood Association pays to have the snow plowed, pays to have the lawn cut, pays for the maintenance of the building, if anything has to be done. How could the city own that, and the Neighborhood Association has to pay for everything? I don't, I don't understand that.
I think there's a similar arrangement with Kaiser Valley, I think that's the same situation there, isn't it?
I have no idea about that.
I guess we have to go back in time, I know Mr. Kester was involved with that in the very way back then, right? I think that he was involved with the association when that was built.
I was gonna say, the Neighborhood Little Leagues are structured the same way that the city owns them, and then they lease them for a dollar. Now, if the community organization was interested in taking full control of the property, I wouldn't be opposed to that at all.
Well, they take care of it now.
Right.
They do everything. One person from the Neighborhood Association told me, they do everything in and around that building.
Yeah, if that organization, I agree with Council Morogan, but if that organization wants to take it over, by all means.
If the city owns it, they should be doing all that stuff. Next thing. A lot of streets in Tripp Park are being paved now, from Hawthorne, I think, over the far. And I know when they were doing my street, I live on Bull War, you know, I live on the corner path, you know about that? I had the curb put in there a few years ago. Now, when they were milling it and sweeping, they knocked the curb all, it's half gone.
Did they put a top coat on yet on your block?
No, they didn't.
Okay.
So I'm hoping, if I see them, I'm gonna ask if they're gonna fix that.
Anything they take down, they need to replace during the paving. So any curbs that they take away to pave, need to be replaced.
Well, they didn't take the whole thing away, they just, not just parts.
It should be left as exactly how it was found.
Also, because if that's not there, my property gets flooded. I came here for years and years to try and get that fixed.
What was your curb constructed of, was it concrete?
No, it's a, they do it from the asphalt.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they will rebuild it, that's part of the contract.
And the whole, like, the whole half circle there on the corner, it's all broken loose now.
And for some reason, if they don't, just let us know.
I'll be, oh, believe me, I'll be back.
Because I remember when we got that taken care of for you the first time, it took a little while, and we don't want to go through that again.
Yeah, Danny Gallagher came up, and he, my wife said, I was at work, she said, he came up and overlooked the project. All right, next thing. I was here a while back saying how nobody wants anything done in this city. People in North Grant don't want the apartment complex. Now, I heard on the news last week, and in the paper, that people in Greeridge don't want a developer from California to put a restaurant in one of the buildings that used to be the state school for the deaf. Again, I say, that's why this city's in the shape it's in. Nobody wants anything in their backyard. Oh, it's gonna be too much traffic. How much more traffic could a restaurant make? It's ridiculous. I live in Tripp Park, I have a new school a couple blocks from my house, I have the Tripp Park, the Village of Tripp Park. I don't complain, buses go by my house all day, school buses. I don't complain, it's something we need. Cars go by to the Village of Tripp Park, I don't care. People are paying taxes. It's unbelievable, some of these people think they're too good to have something in their area. I think a restaurant in that building would be good for the city. They'd have to pay taxes, the people coming, maybe from out of town, going to eat there. Nobody wants anything in their backyard in this city.
We met with the developer, and on paper, it seems like a good idea. The developer seems like he's on top of his game. You know, I was happy to see the project slow down a little bit, the last zoning meeting, I think they tabled it for a month, to have the Neighborhood Association developer maybe come to concessions on some of the things they want to see, since it is gonna be in their neighborhood. So, I'm hopeful that they can get together in the next couple of weeks and get on the same page, because I think it would be good for the area, and definitely good for the city.
How many more cars could a restaurant?
A couple of years ago, we didn't want any, no developers wanted to even invest in us. And we have developers now, so I'm excited for that, and hopefully, they can come together on a certain amount of terms, and we can get this project going.
Yeah, those buildings are just sitting there, empty, so I think it would be great if somebody wanted to put a restaurant.
I was gonna address that item under motions, but since it was brought up...
I don't know if it's gonna come before council.
Yes, it won't come before council, but since it was brought up, I agree with much of what Councilman Perry mentioned, I think it's a great project. And, you know, a school certainly has much more traffic than a restaurant, and only part of the development is in the city. So I'm hopeful that the zoning board will approve it at their next meeting. I know we have a member of the zoning board here, so hopefully, he's listening as well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ron Nelson.
I spoke this morning with a friend of mine that lives in Panama City, and he was telling me how just unbelievably bad it is. He wasn't there for, he left town and came back to, he said everything he had was destroyed. Awful, awful sad what this country's gone through this year, and all these... Well, welcome back, Council, it's good to see you again. If you guys need another Monday off, Monday happens to be Rusev Day. And for those that are not informed, Rusev's one of the WTI wrestlers. He does a commercial for Walmart or somebody, and he's the bad guy. I wouldn't suggest slapping him in the face or anything. This is a complaint form from the Attorney General's Office. I've been talking to him on the phone a couple times the past year. And they think there's enough merit in what they've found on their computers to investigate Henry Mosel's involvement in the sewer deal, his HJA strategies that are owned by his law firm, Chelsea Law Firm of Orange, New Jersey. If I'm right, I'm right, if I'm wrong, I'm sorry. But this man had no law license, he had no business being involved whatsoever, and he was paid forty-three thousand dollars, that I know of. This whole venture's been a calamity, it's just terrible. When I read over some of the old newspaper accounts, you ask April Handsome about something, he says, "Request the details," or, "The money was for services rendered or time spent." Ninety-three million dollar handshake from our mayor. And look at it, it's not nearly resolved. It's just a shame what this administration has done to the people of this city. My little friends, John and Helen, and all these wonderful people I talk to every week. There's so many people, five hundred and sixty-six foreclosures. And like I've told you over and over, every once in a while, I've talked to one of those peoples. It's just a great sadness. There's gonna be more. That's the worst part, there'll be another thousand, what is there, a thousand? Nine hundred and something abandonments, Mr. Evans? There's a whole lot. I got, at my one block of eleven houses, there's two abandoned houses and a section-eight house, they ought to lose their section-eight. It's kept up very poorly. Well, I don't know what's to become with my complaint form, they told me to fill this out, I haven't even opened it yet, I just got it. I wanted to know what happened with Bozoni wanting to move the baseball park to the soccer field and so forth. You know, there's a soccer field at Western Field, not the park, at Western Field, there's a soccer field. I've never been there, so I don't know how good it is, but I can't imagine the gross ignorance of wanting to close a baseball park and turn it into a soccer field, then buy some land somewhere for, with all the problems the city and the school boards having. I feel sorry for some of the students that every once in a while, somebody would come talk to me. You know, we're third from the bottom. Ten thousand dollars a student, and that's what the product is, it's terrible. Well, gentlemen, I hope we have enough Mondays to keep you guys busy for a while. I'm not mad at nobody out there. I think, I think Mr. Perry, he has a little tiny minute leaning for the people, and the rest of you four just seem to be more for the court-right administration.
Well, I can tell you, I'm with these guys a lot, they work hard.
Well, trying to think of us once in a while, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Michael Jeffers, 2628 Pittston Ave. I'm here in support of my neighbors, Daryl and Sean. The issue with the flooding in the 2600 block of Pittston Avenue, it is getting catastrophic at this point. The, I mean, just basic, you know, like Mr. Perry said, I mean, a basic rainstorm with two or three inches of rain, I mean, the whole block, we're talking about four or five houses, and we're not talking about just, you know, a couple inches. I mean, the flooding, this is an issue that we definitely just all need to come together. I know that there's a lot of layers, and I know that things aren't gonna get fixed overnight, we all do understand that. Just help us work on this issue, you know what I mean? Diverting, whether it be diverting some of the water before it gets down to Pittston Ave, like Mr. Perry said, I think that's a great idea on Winfield Ave. It's a manufacturing area, there's businesses there that maybe they have done something recently with their construction, with their parking lot that they just recently put in. Something had to have changed to create this issue. You know what I mean? Like, maybe there's a pipe up there that just needs to be cleaned out, you know, I mean, we just need to look, it could be something as simple as that, clean out the pipe and the water, you know, we need to get up there during a rainstorm and see how the water's going through Winfield Avenue before it gets down. You know, we just gotta work on this issue and try to, because, I mean, my basement's getting flooded. The catastrophic and the worst thing that could happen is with the gas station directly across the street, if that water gets into the fuel, into the diesel fuel, and the diesel, it comes out. I mean, you could see a little bit of that, like, oily kind of reflection in the water right now, when it rains, but I'm sure that that's just, you know, it's not major, major, but it could potentially get to that point. I mean, this issue is just, it's something we need to all just come together, we appreciate your help and your support, and trying to, you know, work through the layers and whatnot, and get all the players, and, you know, get everybody in the same room, sit down and talk about this, and try to figure out a solution. Now, another issue that I also really want to emphasize is the traffic coming into town, as I say, across the 2700 block of Pittston Avenue. When you're going up there, there's a big hill in that street, a hill, lump, whatever you want to call it. That traffic, that in the 2700 block of Pittston Ave, that hill is right in the middle of the block. So when people are coming through, imagine if you're coming through, and it's pouring rain, and that's already flooded out. Next thing you know, once you get to the top of that hill, you only have a half a block to realize that there's three cars in front of you with their brake lights on. That could be a major, you know, safety issue, you know what I mean? And when the police do come and close off the area, they come and they sit at the other end of it, which I understand that they're on the other end of the puddle, because they can't be that close. But you really need to have an officer as an early warner in the 2700 block with his lights on, to let people know to slow down. Because I hear the car screech into a halt, and, you know, I mean, you got rain, oil on the road, and, you know, whatever substances and whatever. So, that could, that is right there, a huge issue, because then you got everybody stopping, nobody knows what to do. Some people are turning right to go up Kane Street, some people are turning left to come down Kane Street. So that is a major issue. Another issue with this whole water situation is down, two blocks down, in between, in the alley in between Collery and Cedar Ave, I don't know the name of the alley, it's not Murphy Court, it's the next alley down, right there, in between Cedar and Collery Ave, the homeowner, I was just talking to him Friday night, he was explaining to me that his backyard is getting flooded. Something happened at the pipe in the alley exploded, he was trying to explain it to me, I really didn't understand exactly how, the pipe exploded underground or in the trench, like I said, and now, his whole backyard is getting flooded. He's gotta put a concrete wall in with cinder blocks and do all this work, just to keep the water out of his property. And he's down on the bottom, on Collery. So, I mean, we just all need to come together. I mean, the bottom line is that, at some point, we're gonna have to get bigger pipes put in. The city has to put bigger pipes to just handle that water. Because with the water coming down Kane Street, coming down the hill, it's just, you know, at this point, it is getting catastrophic. So, thank you all for your support, we appreciate it, all right?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Marie Schumacher. I guess the people in 2600 block of Pittston Avenue can get in line with everybody else in this city, which just, again, that stormwater thing that we waited for from Arcadia turned out to be just a fee structure thing, and, you know, just, it's sad, what we have to put up with. And I wasn't here, Mr. Gawn, I heard it said that, you said that you talked about the, whatever you call it, the throw-as-you-go issue. There's another big disappointment. It doesn't do anything but assume that that's what this city's gonna do. It's not complete, and I don't think it's accurate. In the budget highlights for this year, Mr. Bozoni wrote that there were gonna be increased collections based on the outcome of the rental registration ID program, and enhanced identification of billing units will result. How many, how many units have resulted in being added?
I'm not sure if we can get a report for you.
It's October. Oh, yeah. And, I mean, the way this was written, it was, the Department of DEP was doing a refuse recycling evaluation, and will provide optionality in reviewing the practicality of a pay-as-you-go, which I think it was valid to assume that that was gonna be part of the larger one, which also included, would include privatization. And I thought this would be an excellent time to go to privatization, because nobody at DEP would have to be laid off, they could be transferred to stormwater, and maybe we could do that. So I think this, that certainly needs a lot of work. But now, I would like to move to 5E, because there's only two votes. I don't understand this at all. First of all, the applications are for the multimodal transportation fund, according to the, their, the website, says the applications will be received between March 1st and July 31st of each year. So why, now, in the middle of October, are we doing this? I don't understand that. The other thing that is larger, is one of the whereas's, it says that we're gonna, they wanna borrow or get a grant for two and a half million dollars, but they would like a waiver... a waiver, the city would like a waiver for the required matching funds. Where are we gonna come up with two and a half million dollars if we can't, if they don't waive that? And further says, well, maybe they've talked to somebody, I think, and then when you keep reading, they're asked as part of it, did you talk to anybody on this proposal? No, we didn't. So, something, something doesn't add up here. Plus, the uploaded documents that were part of the backup aren't really there, so it's an incomplete package. You cannot totally evaluate what they're trying to do. And probably it's nice, but is it necessary? No. I mean, do we need streetscapes in a, what, a two, four, four, four-square-block area? I mean, come on, guys. This same fund, if I'm reading it correctly, that they're asking for money could also be used for our street, our street signs, to replace them. Why don't we have, why, if we want to get money from this inter, yeah, what did I say, inter multimodal transportation fund, that is, that is perfect for getting the funding for our streetlights. And our, excuse me, not our streetlights, but because that's part of this period lighting that they want to put in this four-square-block area. And also, there is a 10%, you can't have more than 10% of what you're requesting for, for some of the items, and I ran out of time to go back, but when you read, and the other thing, just as a taxpayer that I object to, is the narrative doesn't really add up to the fact that there's going to be three additional people, this is going to be supporting three additional people, or higher, three additional people. I don't see it. It's a one-and-done. I will come back with more of that next week, but that, I don't know why we're trying to submit something now outside of the period that they accept applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Council. I just wanted to bring two things to the awareness of the city. Number one, the, we have created a complete count committee for the 2020 census for the Scranton region, and we already had our first meeting with two representatives from the Philadelphia region Census Bureau department. So they came in and talked a little bit about the importance of the census, why it's important to have a complete count committee and to have leaders from the community. I am going to send out the briefing of the meeting later on this evening, so I can include all of you in that, but I just wanted to bring awareness to the city that we are organizing and we are stressing the importance that everyone gets counted completely and counted once, because there are $65 billion worth of federal funding that can be distributed to cities based on how we present ourselves in the census. We know our school districts are failing, and that's one area that they give money to public schools, Head Start, CHIP, all of these other public-funded programs get funded based on how we count our people here in the city. So, anyone that is interested, our email is countingscranton2020@gmail.com. We'll have another meeting in February, so I'll make sure to let you know before that happens, so we can get, start organizing and figuring out how to get everyone and all corners of the community counted. The second thing I wanted to share with council is a press release for an event for First Friday coming up, so if I can give you guys some information. So I just shared with you a flyer for a black art exhibition that is going to be happening November 2nd at the Cultural Center in Scranton, which is pretty cool. So this whole art exhibition is focused on highlighting artists of color in the area. We have a lot, a great lineup of some very incredible local artists here who are thrilled to participate and demonstrate their art. And the Black Scranton Project is an initiative here to archive the black history of Scranton, Pennsylvania, sponsoring this event, and it is going to be, like I said, at the Cultural Center. It's our debut art exhibition for local artists of color, many of whom are contemporary painters, mixed media, digital artists. The event is called Shout Out Black Art Exhibition. It's going to take place November 2nd at 6:00 PM at the Cultural Center, followed by a reception at Posh, where there's going to be a live musical performance by two local performers, and as well as more art to be exhibited and displayed there as well. So the Shout Out Black Art Exhibition is a pilot exhibition series for cultural empowerment series, celebrating the contributions of people of color in the arts, education, music, history, and community. Just as the title of this exhibition so affectionately described, it is an unapologetic attempt to support and appreciate Black and Bound creatives in the area. And like I like to say, art is a transformative tool in society and allows us to push the boundaries of our imagination and challenges us in the way that we express ourselves and bear witness to someone else's story that's different than our own. So, this is kind of a unique exhibition, and there's a lot of people who want to participate in the art scene and be a part of the art scene, who felt like they couldn't get in before, so this is gonna be a great family-open environment to meet new people, meet some really amazing artists, and add another layer to the First Friday exhibition. So, yeah, if you want any more information about that, you can visit blackscranton.com. You can email us at info@blackscranton.com. We're gonna have a lot of other exhibitions coming up, collabing with different orgs in the city, and I just wanted to, like I said, share that information. If anyone wants any information or flyers, they'll be around the city, but if you want one as well, I have those. So, those are my announcements, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more time, if you want to read, was it County Scranton 2020?
Counting Scranton 2020@gmail.com.
Yeah, and you made really good points about the census. So many people don't realize how important and valuable that is to our community. That, that's a decade-long federal funding that a lot of counties, a lot of cities miss out on because they're not correctly censused. They're not, they're, the demographics aren't correct, corrected correctly or accurately. And the more accurate, the more funding we get, and obviously, the more funding we get, the more things we can get to do around the community.
Exactly. And with the last bit of my time, can I just mention that it is incredibly important, and in 2010, 1 million children were not counted in the, in the 2010 census, which means they weren't able to participate in Head Start and get the things that they need to be a successful human being. So it is very important, and like I said, I wanted to ask you two how we can get the mayor more involved, also county commissioners, any other people in local and county governments. I've reached out to them before. They told me, which was actually incorrect, and they're trying to apologize about it, was that they don't have any part in the census. When the representatives came, they did explain that the cities and the counties are supposed to do their part to make sure that we're counted properly. So any way that we can come together and collaborate to make sure that we are being counted properly, some, you know, district lines are being created properly, and the kids here, which need us, are getting the funding that they need to grow and develop properly. So, thank you.
While the Census Bureau isn't responsible for collecting the data, it should be up to the municipalities and counties to at least help drive awareness and get the word out to make sure the Census Bureau can actually do their job correctly.
Yes. Oh, last thing, I'm sorry. Last, last, last thing. This is a message I'm forwarding from Ms. Lynn Newman, who is a member, a representative from the Census Bureau. Also, they're going to be in the Pennsylvania area, there's gonna be about 50,000 jobs with the Census Bureau, enumerators, just different types of things. So if people are looking for jobs, there's gonna be postings going out within the next few months, and we need enumerators, which are paid, starting at $15 an hour, which is pretty good, and there's positions to work from home. So there's a lot of ways that we can get involved, and there's are some incentives on doing that. So I'll just leave it at that, and I'll send you guys more information on that soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Glenda knows, I volunteered to help her with her committee, and I'm looking forward to working with her on that. And I agree with Councilman Perry, we missed a lot of opportunities because we did not have a very good census last go-around. Paving was limited, police protection was limited, police protection in the wrong areas, and it goes on and on and on. We tried to make corrections to that, but it was too late, so you have to get it right the first time. So it's very, very, very important, and the work you're doing is extremely important, so we'll absolutely support you in that. That's all I have.
Good evening, everybody else. I'm Chandra. I'm the president of BCFSA, that is, for the Bhutnies Cultural Foundation of Scranton Association. Bhutnies Cultural Foundation of Scranton Association was founded in the year 2013 to protect, preserve, and promote Bhutnies cultural, traditional value and language to facilitate early integration into American mainstream society. BCFSA is a committee to providing equality of lives in Bhutnies refugees in Scranton throughout the grant program. Our current works, with the mission of BCFSA, we put the both, this proposal to establish the Bhutnies tradition and value of Bhutnies Nepali society to promoting and enhancing equality of life in Bhutnies refugees in Scranton. Thus, bringing a social changes for a betterment of Lakavanna community, BCFSA advocates for awareness in such as mental health problem, drugs and alcohol abuse, and social prevention in the community. It also promotes the volunteerism opportunity within various entities, provides a free interpretation to community members to be able to function with community by conducting ESL classes, citizenship classes, job opportunity, and orientation, free transportation when needed to attain the medical appointments crisis counseling regarding domestic problems. So we are located in the 705 Pittston Avenue since last year. So this time, we apply for the, first time we apply for two grants. Unfortunately, we got a letter from here, like social service and the building renovation. So both of grants are denied. So we are very frustrated for this, because we are the newly immigrant over here, and we are also a taxpayer of this county. And we are not satisfied at all, because we want to do something. We want, because we are citizens, we are the taxpayer of this county, we want to develop, we want to make this city as our own city. So that's why we are working hard to make, educate our people through our ESL program. Now we are doing like a uni central. We have like a Somali people, we have Indian, we have Bhutnies, we have Pakistani, we have like all peoples, all immigrants. We are helping all legal immigrants in our, in our community. So we need at least some help from the city. So if we, if we, if we get any help, we can go further. Like, it was like almost 2012, we have almost like a 7,000 population in this county. Now we have only 4,000, because these people are migrating every time to other, other city, because we don't have any facilities over here. I remain touch with city mayor regarding this issue three times. Even last week, I remain touch with city mayor regarding this issue. But so far, I haven't got any positive answer from anybody else. We are frustrating. Now, so far, we have more than 400 voters in Scranton. These, these voters are generated by our ESL classes from 705 Pittston Avenue. Even Mr. Wayne Avenue knows this, our activities, we bought building from Wayne Avenue's, it's right here. And Mr. Wayne, even the building owner knows our activities, how we are surviving. So we are the newly immigrant in this community. So I hope you guys know our situations. We don't know how to speak in English even properly, and you imagine, I am the one of the person who speaks like this, like all broken English. Imagine we have remaining 4,000 people, they don't know, they don't know how to speak English. They never been to school. So we are generating, we are creating, we are giving education to those people, those who are grassroots level people. They don't even know how to pronounce their name. If they go out from, out from the house, they cannot, they cannot come back to the house. So we are focusing in those level. So if we don't work in this group, we cannot develop nothing. If you speak only theoretically, that's not right way. We need to, we need to practically. So practically, we need to survey where we need to invest. If we invest in right way, so we can get right result. So this is our, we are not, want to do, we don't want to do any argue. So if you guys do a right survey, so where we need to invest in right way. So we have a newly immigrant in this community, in this county, we want to make, we want make our house, we are, we think, we are thinking, this is our, this currently our house. So we have to make this house in right way. That's why we are working like a drug and alcohol, like a mental health, social prevention. We are working like 24-hour day. Thank you very much.
Chandra, we did talk about it prior to our meeting. Chandra, I'm over here, and we're gonna look into it. It's very difficult this year, obviously, because a lot of the funds have already been allocated, but we all have the highest respect for the Bhutnies community and the work that you're doing there, so we're, you know, we'll see what we can do, but we'll look at it. We're gonna look at it.
One other brief point, just because the census was brought up prior to you speaking, our CDBG allotment has quite a bit to do with, with the census. So it does highlight the importance of having an accurate census in our city, you know, determining the incomes in the areas of the city in which some of these dollars could be used. Unfortunately, there's a number of programs that aren't being funded, because we, every year, we have many more applications than we have funds available. So this is one of the most difficult things that we do as a council every year with input from the administration. As Councilman Evans mentioned, we are going to look at it, but I would encourage yourself and any of the other applicants, if they are not funded this year, to apply. Do not get discouraged if you are not funded in one year, apply in the next year, because some of these programs that are being funded this year, once they're done, they're done. For instance, some of them are construction-related. I know that you received a loan to grant from the city as well for, for the purchase of your building, and those type of projects, once they're done, they're done. They're, they're not a continual need. So for, for any of the groups that, that aren't being funded, be sure to apply every year. But as Councilman Evans mentioned, we will discuss further prior to a final vote next week on these items.
Yeah, and if I can just interject, I know as a council, we tend to side with newer projects. You know, there's some things that are on our grants yearly for neighborhoods, like money allocated for, for tearing houses down and combinations, certain things like that, but one of the things that I know OECD does, as well as the administration, the council, we want to spread it around. We don't want it to go to the same people every time. So as Mr. Rogan said, once projects are finished, it opens up the door for other new projects, and that's something that we like to look at. We like new, new projects, new people, new blood to energize the city. So if, if it doesn't work out in your favor this time, please don't get discouraged and, and reapply again, because once the money's there, you know, we'd be happy to give it.
Sir, I'm sorry, your, your time is up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to you during the week.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Tonight, we had some, once again, drainage problems, storm sewer problems come up. I would like to see some of these properties put in retention ponds if they're responsible. And these people should, the store, sewer storm deal should be made public and televised in here, not somewhere off in a state room or whatever that's called. It's just, we need people to participate, and some of these problem property owners, if they could get to communicate with the Arcadia people, and even if we started a drive where a whole group of those people concerned could come in and talk to those people, so that the Arcadia people don't have to second guess what the needs are, it would sure be helpful. But a retention pond would be helpful to slow that water up, and apparently, they're just not, as far as diesel fuel and stuff, that comes off of trucks all the time. I spent my whole life in transportation and automotive, and believe me, you can get filthy just crawling under one of them. It's, it's ungodly how bad. Once again, I'd like to call on Mr. McGovern and the 511 tax suit people. Please consider suing the county and state over the 35% excessive tax-exempt properties in our town. They're a whole mixture of different properties, and it's wrong. We're being saddled with these taxes and the tax laws, and certainly, property taxes are probably gonna go up by 30, 40% if they win their case, and I can't take it anymore. Once again, the per bag and all of this came up. What do you do when somebody comes by and tosses three bags of garbage out of the back of their car at 3:00 in the morning? You sit out there like a paranoid schizophrenic? You sit out there like a paranoid schizophrenic, you know? Or under that, would I have to pay for all those bags to be removed? Because certainly, if a city employee came up over a complaint, I'd probably get a fine and they might be sympathetic, but they say, well, Mr. Dobson, it does have to go somewhere. So if I pick it up and throw it somewhere else, it's it's, I'm committing a crime. And it's it's $5.25 a bag in Madisonville for one lousy bag. Now do the math, you're almost at $300 right there. So as much as I sympathize with somebody with their one bag of trash, we really need an accounting of what DPW spends on this. And I think it will turn out that when you start consider wages and trucks and fuel and inspections and parts and repairs and everything else, that it's really kind of a steel deal. And then you can, I took a chair apart, I even recycled the steel. My recliner chair broke and I couldn't take it no more. So I bought a new one, took it apart, tied it together, and it's gone, you know? So I don't have, set it out on the porch, well, guess what? Quality of life will be by, you know, if it doesn't start a fire. On a lighter note, our president's been running around calling a Senator Pocahontas from Massachusetts, Lizzie Warren, and because she mentioned some American Indian lineage. And it turned out she did a genetic test. And she is part Native American, small part as it is. I'm a small part myself and culturally, no, because our parents got all red faced when we're running around going, woo, woo, woo. We're five years old, driving the adults crazy when we found out. But he said he'd give her a million dollars. So I think it's time to pay up, Donald, and don't make me get out the golden parrot. Bach, bach, have a good night.
Mr. Dobson, I think it's like one one thousandth of a million dollars, right? Is what's owed? That's what the percentage was?
No, something like one twenty-fourth or something like that.
Okay.
You can get adopted into an India tribe if you're something like one sixteenth or one twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
They'll actually adopt you as an American Indian.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
I have a few. Most of them we already hit on during the meeting. The Green Ridge project, I just wanted to weigh in on that since we didn't meet the developer and zoning board had their initial meeting, but I discussed that. I'm confident that between the neighborhood association and the developer, they'll be able to work the next couple of weeks and hash out some of the ideas that they have, whatever, to betterment of the developer, also take the stock and well-being of the neighborhood itself in effect, because I do believe in the project. I just hope it works well in that neighborhood and we get an agreement. So I'm looking forward to updates on that. I was going to update everybody on the Pitts and Avenue flooding issues, but we had, we already got that with some speakers tonight. Mrs. Reed, before we went on break, we sent correspondence to Pendot about wrong way signage and upgrading that. As of now, it hasn't been upgraded. We're the 2600 meets the 2500 Pitts and Avenue, just happens to be, that's a big, a big block in today's meeting, no pun intended. But if we can just send a second response over to them and see what's what's the holdup on that. Again, just a shout out for the census, because that is important. CountyScranton2020@gmail.com to get involved. It's monumental. It's it's an endeavor to get a census done, but it's very important. Get counted, get help. I thought you brought up another good point about just all the help that there is for children in need. The last thing you ever want to do is see a child go or start their education later than they need to, because it's almost impossible to make that time back up. So let's let's get, let's get us counted and make sure we don't leave anyone in the in the dust or behind, as the saying goes. I also have something else to read in, but I'll read that during 5F. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any motions or comments?
I hope nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
I do. First of all, I'd like to thank city solicitor Jessica Escri, as well as assistant city solicitor Joe Price for responding to my request to appear at the October 10th, 2018 Assessment Appeals hearing as representatives of the city of Scranton. In a letter to attorney Escri dated October 3rd, I stated the following. As you know, there have been an extraordinary amount of assessment appeals in Lakewanna County over the years, and this year is no exception. Driven primarily by a lack of a countywide reassessment in nearly 50 years, property owners are turning to the appeal process in growing numbers, trying to achieve equity and fairness for themselves. Of course, while this is the right of every property owner to appeal their assessed value, it is also the right of each municipality to be present at appeal hearings and challenge those appeals when it is deemed appropriate and necessary. While it may not be possible to have city representation at each and every hearing, occasionally, the assessment office will have a hearing date that is exclusively scheduled for commercial properties. Such a hearing date has been scheduled for October 10th, 2018, beginning at 10:00 a.m. and ending with the last scheduled hearing at 1:15 p.m. At this hearing, there will be properties in Scranton with assessed valuations ranging from 3,100 for land to 503,100 for a commercial parking garage. The potential for lost revenue from such a hearing can have a damaging effect on the city's bottom line. Therefore, I would like to request that someone from your office represent the city of Scranton at this Assessment Appeals hearing. Efforts to reach out to someone from the Scranton School District might also be appropriate since we represent the same taxpayers. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I have attached the tax assessors' report on this hearing for your review. If you have any questions or comments, please call me and do not hesitate to call me anytime. Sign away, I'm Scranton City Councilman. So I'd like to note that, that they did appear, attorney Price appeared at the hearing on October 10th. And here, someone else representing the city are scheduled to appear at the October 30th hearing, representing the city at the rescheduled Electric City Garage Appeal. I also like to note that I appreciate Ms. Schumacher's diligence in uncovering the original issue of the garage and their tax liability. I am encouraged that the city, through the law department, will continue to have assessment appeal hearings back on the radar screen. The property taxpayers in the city of Scranton deserve nothing less. And on another note, let me see where my notes are here on this one. Prochamps is the company that we have contracted with to register foreclosed properties within the city. Since 2016, they have registered over 1,000 properties in Scranton, which means that we have invested over $100,000 into the successful SHAP program, which stands for Scranton Homeowners Assistance Program, and is administered by Neighbor Works. So if you recall, the city receives a share of the fee for each registered foreclosed property. Through a unique program, the money is, the city receives, instead of being deposited into the general fund, is diverted to be used as part of the SHAP program. A program that gives up to, grants up to $5,000 to first time home buyers to do repairs and improvements to the exterior of the new home they recently purchased. It not only encourages new homeownership in the city, but it has a positive impact, of course, on the purchased property, the block, and the neighborhood where those homes are located. To date, over $130,000 in grants to 27 different homeowners have been awarded. There are currently 11 other property owners, new property owners, by the way, with pending projects waiting for additional funding, and a waiting list is also being developed. A little over two years ago, this was just an idea developed by this city council with support, of course, and concurrence from the administration. Neighbor Works, our partner in this endeavor, has done a tremendous job with this program and has even increased the amount of funding by securing additional grants. Recently, Prochamps has notified us that there are another approximately 160 foreclosed properties that have been identified but have refused to register. However, there currently is no legal method in place to force them to comply. Thankfully, Prochamps does have a plan in place for compliance. With authorization through the city, through an ordinance, they would be allowed to contract out legal services to collect those delinquent fees and get those properties registered. Those additional dollars would be used to continue to enhance this already excellent program. It could mean as much as an additional $60,000 in grants to another 10 to 15 homeowners in the city each and every year. So hopefully, we will see legislation from the administration authorizing these additional efforts soon. If our expectations are to continue to be a city with a majority of homeowners, and I can't stress how important that is, because a healthy and sustainable city is one where the majority of the residents are living in homes that they own, then programs like this are more vital to our city's long-term well-being than they were ever before. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to make a motion that city council requests that all boards, commissions, and authorities within the city of Scranton send a copy of their minutes of any meetings that they have to city council for inclusion in third order on our agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I make this motion, you know, in the last few years, especially in the last year with the Scranton Recreation Authority, we were not receiving copies of their minutes. I don't think we received copies of the minutes from the Scranton Sewer Authority, and I know that we don't receive them from the Scranton Civil Service Commission. So I do think that any board, commissioner, or authority within the city should send their minutes to us so that we could put it on our agenda and that the public can view it. So that's why I'm making the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it in some way.
Thank you. The 200 block of Arthur Avenue, 700, 700 block of Mayhand Court between Gibson and Pine and Quincy and Myrtle Avenue, residents at a recent Hill neighborhood meeting requested that storm drains located in these areas be cleaned, and we did receive confirmation from Pennsylvania American Water that they were cleaned. So just want to let everybody know that. I'd also like to make a motion at this time, as chairperson of the Department of Public Works, I'd like to make a motion to call a public caucus with Mayor Courtwright and any appropriate members of his administration to discuss the recent flooding in the last few months, specifically, the city's response to this flooding, protocols that are currently in place or lack thereof, and what the plan is to deal with the dangerous, sometimes catastrophic flooding spots throughout the city that affect our citizens.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I make this motion for a number of different reasons. I just want to mention that weeks ago, I had asked specific, very specific questions of the mayor and his administration regarding the flood in August of this year. And my questions had to deal with reimbursement issues with the state, whether or not we had submitted damages and whether or not we're going to get funding for the reimbursement process. I received a note from the city solicitor that they were putting something together, but I still have not received anything, which weeks later makes absolutely no sense. Another one of my concerns was after that major flooding event, I don't think that the city did enough to notify residents on how to submit for damages, submit for a reimbursement process. And there was a process in place. I know the city put something on the website. I didn't see anything in the newspaper, and I saw nothing on the news. I didn't see a press release or anything like that from the mayor and his administration. The other reason I think we need this meeting is because people are in the city are under the false impression, I think, that this Arcadis study is going to solve all of our stormwater issues, and it's not. The Arcadis study is simply to show us how we're supposed to fund the authority and how we're supposed to set up the authority. We need a plan in place to deal with some of the issues that were mentioned tonight on Pitts and Avenue, major issues in Kaiser Valley, throughout West Scranton, North Scranton, so on and so forth. I don't think that we can wait for a study. We really need leadership from the mayor on this issue. Because as I mentioned to the gentleman, Mr. Palmer, who spoke earlier, I get calls, and Mrs. Reed knows this, knows this to be true, because I forward a lot of them to her so we can get them to the appropriate department, I get calls weekly from people who are getting flooded. Pitts and Avenue, Kaiser Valley, I had specific questions about the pumping station on Merrifield Avenue. There's residents that get flooded every single time it rains. So there's got to be something that we can do. Mr. Jeffers mentioned that I think everybody understands that it won't be solved overnight. But I do think that we need to get everybody in a room and get a plan together to deal with it. I know that it costs money, but as I said, there has to be something even temporarily that we can do. I know residents down on Merrifield Avenue were talking about the possibility of the city buying them out, because they get flooded every time it rains. So I don't know if that's a possibility. But I do think that we need to assess some of the most dangerous spots throughout the city and come up with a plan to rectify them. Come up with a dollar amount, if that's what it needs to be. Go to the state, march on the state Capitol. We have a problem in the city. And I hear from some people, well, it's a hundred year storm. Well, it seems to me that we're getting these storms more frequently, so we need to do something.
On the question, I would also ask that a representative from Pennsylvania American Water come to the meeting if at all possible, because they're responsible for the combined systems of storm and sewer. And one of the big problems is when we have an issue like tonight, we don't even know where to begin to call, who's responsible, is it stormwater, is it a combined system? And I think that, and they have the technology that will determine that very quickly, and I think we need to come up with a better protocol to what happens when a resident has a complaint and where do they go first. So I think if you're always, that would be a friendly amendment to your motion, if you don't mind.
Mm-hmm, yeah. When I said any appropriate officials, I meant their DPW, anybody that the mayor would deem important to be in this meeting. And I do think it's important that the mayor is here, because again, people are looking for leadership. We're getting called, I've been getting called since the beginning of the summer from people throughout the city. And they call Pennsylvania American Water, Pennsylvania American Water tells them to call DPW, DPW tells them to call someplace else. And again, there needs to be a protocol in place here, even a hotline, something where when it rains and we get flooded in these, in these spots throughout the city, there's got to be a plan in place. And maybe there are protocols, but we need to know about it, and so does the public. And especially, and again, I'll stress this, I would like to know what is going on with the reimbursement from the state for that flooding event in August? Are we getting money from the state? What were the damages that were compiled? And how did they get that information out to residents? Because I know people in Kaiser Valley, people in West Scranton, Al Young over on Wyoming Avenue, 10, 15, $20,000 worth of damages, replacing furnaces every time it rains. It's getting to the point where it's ridiculous. So I think, again, we all need to get into a room, invite the public and all these people that are affected by it, and come up with a plan, not the Arcadis study, because that's a totally different thing. How is the DPW and how are we as the city of Scranton going to deal with these issues? And I think it's very important that we do that now, and we do not wait.
Anyone else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it in some way.
Also, we sent a letter in regards to 361 North Sumner Avenue, 363 and 359 North Sumner, again, because of major flooding issues. Their people's front yards and basements are getting flooded. So we sent the details of this to DPW. Very concerning, there was a large hole, a sinkhole that opened up at 359 North Sumner Avenue and 363 North Sumner Avenue. So we'd asked that that be looked at. The 1400 block of Cherry Street on East Mountain, there's a drainage ditch, Mrs. Reed, at 1425 that's blocked. The water's rushing through people's yards as well as onto the street and flooding neighbors' cellars. These people continue to call the city, and they're putting thousands of dollars worth of work into their house, and it keeps happening to them. So if we could send that to the DPW as well. Also, Mrs. Schumacher asked a few weeks ago about a list of equipment that the DPW uses specifically for stormwater management, if we could send another request, because I'd like to see that myself. The Kaiser Valley Community Center parking lot flooding issues, I've been receiving calls about this. It's come to my attention that the Kaiser Valley Neighborhood Association apparently received a grant through Senator Blake's office, and the work was put out to bid, but apparently, nobody bid on this project yet, from what my understanding is. So if we could send a note or a letter to the city administration asking for an update on this whole thing, and if there's any way that we can help, the city can help with this project. Because again, another major issue, the parking lot floods every time it rains. Also, I asked last week about a transfer from the Workers Compensation Trust Fund to the IT department in the amount of $349,000. I wanted to know specifically what necessitated this transfer. Mr. Bolzoni did get back to us with a list of items that are being funded from this transfer, but I am going to ask for clarification on that, because I am a little concerned about this method of transferring money from the Workers Comp Fund. What it paid for some things in the Police Department... It paid for some things in the Police Department and then the Sirente Center that the city recently acquired. Also, again, on the stormwater issues, there's a manhole at Race and Brown Street in the plot that's overflowing with sewage every time it rains, so we did, we are going to send that along to DPW. We did find out from Pennsylvania American Water that that is a DPW issue. That line is, is the responsibility of the city. And that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just two items. First, I wanted to talk about, it was brought up by one of our speakers, and it was written about in the Scranton Times, is just a little background on how firefighters are hired in the city of Scranton. The Scranton Times, of course, never, missing an opportunity to take a cheap shot at somebody, wrote a very unfair article about a recently hired firefighter. Little background on how the civil service test works to become a firefighter in the city of Scranton. It has absolutely nothing to do with who you are, if you have a relative that works for the city. The only preference points that are given out is for veterans, which I believe should be given out. The test is in three parts. The first part is a written exam. It is not a written exam administered by the city or written by the city, it's done by a third party, the city fire department, council, the mayor. We don't even have access to any of the questions or anything that is given out. So the people will sign up, they take their written test. After the written test is complete, those individuals who pass move on to the next phase, which is the physical test. I believe they have to run a mile under a certain amount of time, climb up a ladder, carry weights, bench press, your typical physical strength tests. There's certainly no way to give preferential treatment on a physical test. You could either run a mile in a certain amount of time or you can't. You could either lift the weight or you can't. The third part of the test is an oral examination and then a background check. That is conducted, again, after only those who pass the first two parts. And I believe that the first and the second part are where the vast majority of people that don't make it to the final cut get eliminated. After that part, there is a brief background check. Felonies, I believe, would disqualify anyone from serving. But in this case, the individual who was hired, I believe, was in the top five out of a large number of people that were, were hired. This is not any case of favoritism or nepotism. If the school board, or if the newspaper wants to look into nepotism, they should take a ride down to the school board and look at how many school directors have family members working for the city, working for the school district that were hired through political patronage processes. The civil service test for police and fire is done strictly on a qualifications basis. There are other jobs that are given out at-will, for instance, secretaries within certain departments. Some, some other positions are hired strictly on an at-will basis, where if it's a friend or a family member and somebody wanted to hire them, they could. So unfortunately, that does happen in, in government. It's happened in the city through the years. But anyone who knows anything about how civil service hiring works knows that this entire story really shouldn't have ever even been written. Again, it was just an attempt at a cheap headline. Moving on, Councilman Gawn brought this up, and I know a couple residents did as well, the pay-as-you-throw analysis. Couple things I wanted to talk about on here, as anyone that watches these meetings knows, I long have opposed the flat rate for a garbage fee. Currently, residents pay, without any discount, three hundred dollars for the year, and they can throw out as much garbage as they want. My objection to that system is that it rewards those who create more garbage and punishes those who create less. This system, which is a hybrid system, and I'm not endorsing that a hybrid system is the best way to go, I still think a strictly per-bag fee is the most fair way. But these hybrid fees, two of them that were mentioned, and some of the details weren't mentioned from the podium, but there were two scenarios that were laid out. Scenario one includes a base fee of two hundred and fifty dollars per year, so it's fifty dollars less than the current, and that would allow anyone to throw out two bags of garbage per week. So if you throw out two bags of garbage per week or less, you would certainly save money under this system. Any bags above that amount would be two dollars per sticker. So if you have three bags, it would be your flat fee and then two dollars per week, and so on. The second system, which is set up, is a base fee with no free waste, so it would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars base fee, and then you would pay one dollar per sticker. So that same person that throws out two bags a week, under that system, would pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars. If you throw out one bag a week, you would pay approximately a hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So that's what a hybrid system would look like. Looking at a strictly per-bag fee would be, say, if it was two dollars per bag, and then you would just pay only on the amount you throw out. A hybrid system is most similar to your sewer bill, where you pay, everyone pays a flat fee per unit, depending on whether you use zero gallons of water or if you were filling a pool, and then the second component is based strictly on your utilization. I do think this analysis definitely should be looked into further, and there are a lot of pros and cons to this type of system. One thing that was not mentioned in here that somebody mentioned from the podium was privatization. I think that is a simple way to find out how much it costs, is you just simply put it out for bid and see what proposals come in and what those proposals look like. I have long felt that it should be put out to bid just to see if we're truly getting the best deal by having garbage done in-house. But I am, was grateful to, to have this study and to be able to look through it, and as I mentioned, it does lay out the pros and cons pretty fairly. I do believe this, this study was done pretty down the middle, but it, it will keep, keep the conversation going. I think one of the most hated items that we hear from residents in Scranton is the garbage fee, and particularly those who do not, do not throw out a lot of garbage. The other item I didn't mention that I really love about this type of system, a hybrid or a strictly per-bag system, is it would dramatically increase recycling. When you look through our neighborhoods, there are people that do not recycle at all, and if they were paying more based on how much they put out, I guarantee every shred of cardboard and every last soda can would be put in, in one of our recycling bins. So that would save the city money, and it would help the environment as well. That is all I have for tonight.
Can I add one additional thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Reed, I apologize. I forgot, I don't want to leave this off the list. Ninety-five Linwood Avenue on East Mountain, I met with a gentleman up there this past week, and he's also having flooding issues. I'll get together with you after the meeting. He provided videos, and I was up there to see it, so if we could send that to DPW and ask for them to take a look at it. And also, I received an issue at three-thirty South Irving Avenue about an empty lot, and the neighbor next door keeps getting flooded. The lot's pitched towards his house, so I don't know if anything could be done there, but I'll get together with you after the meeting on that.
And actually, I'm glad you mentioned that. If you could add to that Linwood letter, the two-hundred block of South Sumner Avenue, actually had some videos sent to me as, from, from that block during heavy rains, there's significant issues going on, if we could direct that to the DPW as well.
Five B for introduction of resolution, appointment of Timothy J. Woody, five forty Orchard Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A505, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Mr. Woody will be replacing Jennifer Herman, whose term expired June seventeen, two thousand sixteen. Mr. Woody will be appointed to a five-year term effective August twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, and will expire August twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five C for introduction of resolution, appointment of Raymond J. Kelly, ten Fawnwood Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A504, to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Kelly's effective date will be September fourteen, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Kelly will be replacing Paul Duffy, who resigned effective May three, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Kelly's term will expire with the term of Mayor William L. Courtwright.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? I would just like to thank Mr. Duffy for his service on the Civil Service Commission. I know we've talked a number of times about different issues, and I, I'm confident that Mr. Kelly is, is a great choice. I've known him from his time in the Police Department. He's, like I said, an excellent choice by, by the mayor to fill this role. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five D for introduction of resolution, appointment of the Center for Independent Living, eleven forty-two Sanderson Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A503, as a member of the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, effective September nineteen, two thousand eighteen. The Center for Independent Living will serve on the commission for a five-year term ending September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five E for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a multimodal transportation funds grant to be used for the Cedar Avenue Phase Two in the amount of two million four hundred ninety thousand dollars.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item five E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. Mrs. Schumacher raised some good points on this grant, so if we could, if everybody agrees, ask someone from the administration and maybe UNC to come in before final passage on this, just to give an explanation of the project. I'd also like to know about the city waiving the match requirement and also about the, the grant, when you submit the grant, and Mrs. Schumacher's question on that I thought was, was relevant. Thank you.
Yeah. On the question, since this is a Phase Two, I would think there's, there is something more to it, it even references Phase One in the previous project, so this is probably a continuation of a project that was started, and maybe the plan all, all along was to do just this. So yeah, it would be nice to have a further explanation.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five F for introduction of resolution, accepting a three hundred and sixty-dollar donation from Uffberg and Associates LLC, given to the City of Scranton Police Department Special Operations Group.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item five F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I just want to read real quickly a letter that we got from Uffberg and Associates in regards to this donation, and this letter was addressed to Chief Graziano. Enclosed a check made payable to the city of Scranton in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars. It is intended, and our firm would like to designate it, as a donation to the Scranton Police Department Special Ops Group in appreciation for the outstanding active shooter training presentation made on July twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, at a request by Sergeant Thomas Carroll to representatives from several dozen area companies at a labor and employment law seminar hosted by our firm. Sergeant Carroll refused our various offers of personal or group compensation, even a gift certificate for use by several officers to enjoy at a local restaurant, for performing such an invaluable professional service for our attendees. His, and by extension, the city's graciousness were recognized and most appreciated by all involved. Though we hope such a horrific event never occurs with our clients, in our city, our region, or anywhere, it is sadly essential information and a vital tool for all employers to have. The city's active shooter training program and Sergeant Carroll himself are credits to our police department and to our community. Thank you. And that's from Uffberg and Associates, signed by Robert Uffberg. So I just want to thank him for thanking us for that and giving us that donation. It's very generous.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five G for introduction of resolution, appointment of Devon Draby P. Dave, six sixty-one North Washi, excuse me, North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A509, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Housing Authority. Mr. Dave will be replacing Thelma Wheeler, whose term expired September twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Dave will be appointed to a five-year term effective October five, two thousand eighteen, and will expire on October five, two thousand twenty-three.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item five G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Sixth order, six eight, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number Thirty-three, two thousand eighteen, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by Sri Saibaba Corporation, doing business as TJ's Beer and Deli, currently in safekeeping with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, formerly used at sixteen forty Main Street, Dixon City, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 1A447, for use at eighteen oh one, eighteen oh three Pittston Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 1A505, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question? Rule call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Downey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the Council Number Thirty-four, two thousand eighteen, creating and establishing special city account number as noted and titled, two thousand eighteen capital budget for receiving and dispersing capital project funds designated in the two thousand eighteen capital budget.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question? Rule call, please.
Mr. Beery?
Yes.
Mr. Downey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number Seventy-three, two thousand eighteen, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Ray Dominique's rear twenty-ten Far Streets, Scranton, PA 1A504, for masonry work to be completed on the front edifice of the building situated at five thirty-four Lackawanna Avenue, Scranton, PA 1A503.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question? Rule call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Downey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted. There's no further business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.